Good evening, everybody. The time is 5:30 PM. Today is Tuesday, May 16th, 2023. I'd like to call to order this special City Council, City of Emeryville as Successor Agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency and Management of Emeryville Services Authority Special Close Session Meeting. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format. You can be joining us here at Park Avenue, 1333 Park Avenue, Emeryville City Hall, or via Zoom and use the link provided for on the agenda. I'll ask if the clerk would please begin with the role.
Councilmember Carr is absent. Councilmember Mora?
Present.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Present.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Here.
And Mayor Batters?
Here. Can we recall Councilmember Carr?
Yes. Councilmember Carr?
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any ex parte communications to report from any members regarding the closed session agenda items? Seeing none, now is the time for public comment. A member of the public who wishes to comment for an item on the closed session agenda will have two minutes to do so. Did we receive any written comment cards for tonight's meeting?
No, Mayor, we did not.
There are no people present wishing to speak and no hands raised online. Public comment is now closed. Ma'am clerk, the time is 5:31. We're going to adjourn to the closed session to take items five, six, and seven, and we will report out upon completion of those items. Thank you.
Are we on? At six fourteen, we're reporting out of closed session. I'll ask if Mr. Kennedy would please report out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only reportable action that was taken is with respect to six point one point one, the claim of Shanat- Shonet Ba- Bell. On a motion by Vice Mayor Welch, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora, the City Council approved a settlement for this claim, which involved property damage to the claimant's vehicle in the amount of three hundred and forty-six dollars and fifteen cents. The City Council approved the settlement by a motion of a vote of five to zero.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. The time is six fifteen. This meeting is adjourned. The time is six fifteen. I call to order this City Council amended special study session. Please note that this meeting is being conducted in hybrid format. Members of the public are welcome to join us at City Hall. You can also participate by joining us via the Zoom link online. When called for public comment, you can use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press star nine on your phone, and we will recognize you at that time. Please note, Madam Clerk, that all members are still present. This time, I'll take a motion to approve the final agenda.
I move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Welch and a second by Councilmember Mora to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Batters.
Aye, thank you. Are there any ex parte communications to report for our two study session items this evening? Seeing none.
This is related, this is related to the grants?
Nope, this is item six point one and six point two of the study session.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Item five is public comment for items not on the agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment for an item not on the agenda for the special study session? And let me just check online. I see no hands raised. Did we receive any written comments for this meeting?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Public comment is closed. We'll turn to item six. We have two study session items tonight. Six point one is our first. It's the capital improvement program for calendar years two, twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-eight. We'll turn it over to the Public Works Department for the presentation.
We should have Josie online.
Josie is on.
Okay, good evening, Josie.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for having me. I don't know if I'm able to share my screen, so April, are you able to assist with that?
Hold on just a second, Josie. I'm just gonna share for you. You can just let me, let me know when I need to advance the slides, okay?
Great, thank you so much. So, yeah, again, good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for having me. I'm joining remotely from Denver, Colorado, where I and three other Public Works staff are attending the NACTO Conference, the National Association of City Transportation Officials, and it's been really exciting to learn from other people across the country. But tonight, I will be sharing again about the capital improvement program. The presentation is similar to what you have seen before, but we wanted to just reshare the information since many councilmembers are new, and if you have any questions about the information, please ask me at the end. The exciting part of this presentation is we will be showing the comparison charts of the total amounts from the last CIP as well as this CIP, and then the draft project pages for the new projects. Next slide, please. So I sort of already went through our agenda, but I'll move through the first portion quickly since you've seen that before, and we'll spend some more time on the comparison and then the new projects. Next slide. So again, as many of you are familiar, the capital improvement program is a five-year plan that helps guide Emeryville's investment in our public buildings, parks, streets, sewers, and other city facilities. And as city staff, we use the CIP as a roadmap to do all sorts of things, including design, construct, and repair city facilities that support our goals of a livable and sustainable Emeryville. Next slide. Um, I like to go over this each time, which is the difference sort of between capital projects and maintenance projects for requests. So in the capital improvement program, our projects are large-scale, long-term investments that build, replace, or improve public infrastructure. In contrast to that, maintenance projects are smaller and generally are short-term repairs, and these are things that can be requested and addressed through CCLIC. The classic example is a pothole. We don't have very many in Emeryville, but if you do come across one, that is something that you can request through CCLIC fix to be addressed. That is a sort of short-term, uh, small repair. In comparison, when we do our full repaving or our slurry seals on our streets, that is a much larger investment, a much, much larger project, and and repaving is a capital project. And so you'll see larger projects in the CIP like, like full repaving. Next slide. So our timeline, again, we're getting very close to the end of our many-month process. We began in October with a council study session and then moved in November to hosting city staff discussions. And so Public Works staff met with staff from across the city to hear their needs and priorities for the CIP. In December, we did outreach to the public, to residents and constituents in Emeryville, to alert them that January here would be the time for public input. Um, that public input did occur via committees in January, and I attended, I think, nine different committees, both council committees and public advisory committees, um, to gather input on, um, projects and to hear needs from across the city. We then released a public feedback survey, um, from about the middle of February till the end of March. We wanted to, um, gain feedback from the public on our draft list of projects. Um, and and we asked people to rank different types of projects based on the type of project as well as the size of the project. Um, and throughout the spring, we've been working with, um, finance staff to do the budget analysis. And then, um, last month in April, at the end of April, um, we visited the council's Budget and Governance Committee on April twenty-fifth, and then the Budget Advisory Committee on April twenty-seventh, and received some feedback from those two committees that we've incorporated for today. And then here we are in May. This is our, our last study session with council, and then next week we will be going to the Planning Commission to get their approval to make sure that our CIP is in line with our city's general plan. And then hopefully, um, at the first meeting in June, the CIP will be adopted alongside the two-year budget. Next slide, please. Again, just sharing our, um, sort of foundational pieces of the CIP, these blue boxes down at the bottom, these are our sort of, uh, yeah, foundational blocks. This includes our source documents, values, and categories, which I will, um, get to in a minute. Um, but basically how we got from those dark blue blocks up to our draft project list is that we began with the previous CIP list and took then city staff, council, and public input to get that draft project list. And that was what was available online in February and March for the public survey. And from that time, then refining to get to our final project list, um, really sitting down to look at what our budget constraints are, and then also council priorities to help refine that draft project list. Next slide, please. So the CIP is not trying to reinvent the wheel. The city has, um, a number of very thorough documents and and plans that will help us reach different goals and priorities for the city. So the CIP really wants to just pull those, um, documents together, those source documents, and act as a way to put all of our capital needs into one document, but we don't really want to invent the, reinvent the wheel. Um, so you'll see a number of documents here, including two that are in a draft phase. The Active Transportation Plan will hopefully become final very soon. Next slide. Um, the previous CIP used general plan elements to tag projects. In this, uh, new CIP, we, uh, wanted to come up with values that, um, are, uh, specific to Emeryville. Um, we gathered these values, um, through discussions with city staff. Um, and we're using values this time to be able to tag projects, and I'll show you that in the sample project pages. At each project will be tagged with the different values that apply to it. Next slide, please. And finally, the last up, major update, um, and major foundational piece of the CIP are our new categories. So here you see six new categories. Um, this is a reduction from the eleven categories for last time. Our intention with, um, reducing the number of categories was to simplify them and to also draw more attention to, um, specific, uh, areas of work. For instance, urban greening, there was not one parks or greening category before. Um, this, this new category will pull together all of our, um, trees and and parks and other greening efforts. Um, essential infrastructure is our, our stormwater and, um, our bridges, um, other sort of critical pieces of infrastructure across the city. Sustainable transportation is a large category that includes our traffic signals, paving, all of our pedestrian and bike and transit work. And it's, it's pretty, it's a pretty large category. Housing is a special new category. Um, in this CIP, we're, um, pulling in the information directly from the Affordable Housing Expend, Bond Expenditure Plan. Um, and basically just giving, um, a way to highlight the information in that plan for how the city plans to invest and use, um, the bond money that voters approved recently. Community facilities, um, is all of our public buildings, um, and other facilities. This includes City Hall, um, the Senior Center, ECCF, ECDC, and the Marina. And then our last category is, um, all of our both software and hardware that supports our information technology across the city. Next slide, please. Um, so I pulled in this comparison chart. This is, um, also available in the staff report. Um, if you would, uh, like to look at it more closely, but this is a summary table comparing at the top the previous CIP from twenty nineteen, and the bottom table, um, is for the new CIP for this year. As you can see in the top one, um, in the first column on the left, those are the eleven prior categories. In that CIP, there were eighty-five projects, um, for a total of of fifty-four million dollars. And, um, just showing all of the projects that do not include the housing category. And that is because in this new CIP, um, the housing category does not have funding attached to it. It is just showing the information from the Bond Expenditure Plan. Um, and so then in comparison, we now have the, the new categories down below, not including housing. Um, we have forty-five projects for a total of sixty-eight million dollars, which in comparison to all of the categories not including housing before, is a twenty-six percent increase. I'm happy to get into this in more detail if you have questions, but I'll, I'll move us on to the project pages, and we can come back to this later. Next slide, please. All right, so this is the, um, exciting part. Um, I will not go through all of these in great detail. Um, in the packet. There were the versions of this. It has all the same information, but it wasn't, um, formatted by our graphic designer yet, so these are hot off the press from earlier today. And so I'll just be going through each of these, um, very quickly to show you information about the new projects. Um, to orient you to the page a little bit, um, in the upper right corner is the logo for the category. As you'll see in the upper left, this is a community facilities category, and the name of the project is Facility Resiliency Upgrades. Um, then there's information beneath that about the CIP book number. And if a project number has been assigned to it, it would be there. The new projects do not yet have project numbers assigned to them. Um, you'll then see on the right-hand side, up near the top again, the priority level, as well as the status of the, of the project. Beneath that, you'll see the Lead Department, as well as the description of the project. And on the right-hand side, sort of halfway down through the page, um, are the values. And the values that are green are the ones that apply to this project. Um, and then down below is, um, the funding information, both by source and then by fiscal year. Um, so this new project, um, is an effort to centralize a lot of our, um, resiliency upgrades that we'll be doing to our facilities. This includes updating and replacing existing fuel tanks and emergency generators, as well as installing EV charging, um, and solar panels for our facilities. Next slide, please. Um, this project, uh, is about updating our Civic Center, so this is, um, replacing a prior legacy project. Um, and there's a note in the description there, um, but this is to make sure that we have funding set aside for upgrades that may be needed at Civic Center in the future. Next. This is our, um, new public art master plan projects. Um, this is pulling directly from input from the Public Art Committee. Um, as you'll see, there, 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 uh, sorry, as you'll see on the page, they have listed out their funding priorities for the next, um, five years, which include Fortieth Street Improvements, Temeskal Greenway Wayfinding Program, um, and then the commission of two pieces by the artist Ned Khan. Next, please. Um, this is our, uh, Essential Infrastructure category. This is our new Stormwater Management Bucket. This is combining a few legacy projects to, um, make sure that we have funding for different needs, um, to help manage our stormwater system. Next, please. Um, a new bucket program as well, our Bridge Maintenance Program, which combines three prior projects, um, under one new umbrella. Um, and this is, uh, funding to maintain our bridges over the next five years. Next. Another Essential Infrastructure Project, which is our Powell Street Sewer Project. This is a project to update the sewer, um, that is in the part of Powell Street west of, of the freeway, um, heading out to the Marina. Next. Um, this is a, a new project, um, in collaboration with, um, future funding from Caltrans, um, to install hydraulic separator units or trash capture devices, um, at, on and off ramps, um, uh, that are in Emeryville. Next. This is a, um, new project for a fire station alert system. It will actually be, um, two new alert systems. Next. Moving on to our Information Technology category, this is a, um, new bucket project which combines funding for a number of different applications and development needs that we will have. Um, this includes GIS, um, and then Electronic Document Management System, or EDMS. Next. This is a project that will take place where you all are right now, um, which is, um, building and funding to do audio and visual updates and improvements to council chambers as we move into the next phase of life of the pandemic where we have hybrid meetings. Um, so this is funding, uh, to address some of those needs. Next. This, uh, moving on to our Sustainable Transportation category, this is our new and improved, um, paving program under a new name, Sustainable Streetscapes. This is a very, um, large and ongoing, um, bucket that pulls together prior funding, um, from a, a number of smaller projects, including, um, pedestrian and bike upgrades, transit stop improvements, um, survey monuments, that sort of thing. And so this project will actually exist across two pages just because all of the text and the information and the funding couldn't fit on one page. Next. So you'll see it continued there. Next. Um, this is our new studies category for our Active Transportation Plan projects. Um, this is coming out directly from the Active Transportation Plan. We want to set aside funding, um, to make sure that we have uh, money available to be able to do the planning, um, and and study pieces before we actually move into design of new projects. Um, this is not the image that we will be in the book. This is just a placeholder image, but the information on this page is correct. Next. Another, um, bucket category is combining traffic signals and streetlights into one. Um, we did this because often both traffic signals and streetlights, um, are lumped together and and done by the same contractor. And so we thought it would make sense to combine these two. As you can see, the, the small note, it has information about combining two prior legacy projects, which separately were the streetlights and then the traffic signals. Next. Um, this is a large project coming directly from our Active Transportation Plan. This is the Emeryville Loop Project. Um, this project will, um, do, uh, large infrastructure upgrades to, um, the Emeryville Loop, which includes Shell Mountain and Christie. And this is a, a high priority project coming out of the Active Transportation Plan. Next. And one more. Um, another large project coming out of the Active Transportation Plan Two. This is, um, sort of the next phase of our Fortieth Street Project Phase Two, um, to help close the gap between where the Fortieth Street Project will end and where the Loop will be. Um, and this will be improvements along, uh, Shell Mound. Next. And moving on to our final category, um, for urban greening. Um, this is our new Large Parks Projects Bucket Project. Um, this also has a lot of information here because these, um, are listed priorities coming out of, um, the Parks and Rec Committee. So I pulled this directly from the information that they sent, um, to city staff. Um, so they had seven, well, we're showing seven top priorities here. Two of them, um, are not listed because they are already being addressed in other projects. Um, but you can read more closely, um, more information about what it would be, um, potential candidates for, for improvements in this Parks Project Bucket. Next. And one more, please. Um, this is a, um, small amount of funding set aside to do park studies. This is to help fund, um, you know, city staff's work to investigate potential park improvements, um, and potential, um, siting of locations for new parks. Next. Um, and then this is a, um, another Future Parks Project, which would be the Northwest Linear Park, um, along Lacoste and, you know, the very northwest corner of Emeryville. This project here, um, is a little small, but right under the budget green box, you'll see a little star there, and that says Potential Bonus Point Community Benefits or Grant Project. I apologize, I didn't point this out sooner, but this designation is on a few prior projects as well. Um, and this is a, a little icon to help flag, um, projects that, um, are discretionary or have, um, portions of them that are unfunded at the moment, and these would be good candidate projects, for bonus points from a developer or for future grants. for bonus points from a developer or for future grants. And I believe that is the last project. Oh, I apologize. Our, I I believe this is the last one. Our Urban Tree Planting Program is the the last sort of large project under urban greening that is new. This is replacing the legacy project of the Street Tree Program. We really wanted to expand after receiving feedback from the Budget and Governance Committee. We wanted to expand this project to be beyond street trees, to be all trees, all public trees in Emeryville. And so that's why we updated the name. And I believe that that is it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Josie.
For hearing your thoughts and questions.
Thank you, Josie. Before we do that, we'll turn to public comment. We're on the agenda item for item 6.1 in the study session. Members of the public who wish to comment on the study session for the CIP will have two minutes to do so. Do we, Mr. Suter, welcome to come to the microphone? Good evening, sir. Use the use the mic so the folks can hear you there.
Yes, yes, there we go. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Being a strong, I'm I'm coming from the staff notes rather than the presentation, which wasn't shown to the public. And so I'm 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 speaking from the staff notes. And but being a strong proponent, if not a key sponsor, for the CIP INT-01, that was for elevating Emeryville's website IT, I encourage you to support this project by giving INT-01 the highest priority. As you can imagine, I would love to have number one position. But I feel that if it was in the top three, I would be validated. You accepted the Commission on Aging's unanimous position of this need for improvement to our city's IT infrastructure. I sense that this is the moment to express the urgency INT-01 holds. Your choices of priority will affect the success of the CIP 2023 to 2028 plan. The Commission on Aging proposal was comprehensive, and consultant's design will create an even more provocative result. Unfortunately, in the notes, the description of INT-01 had no sizzle. But the effect of this CIP project will be another example of the leadership Emeryville is being recognized for in the state of California. Further, I commit to providing aid to the contractor you select in their design and testing efforts. Emeryville's website has the potential to be extremely dynamic. That little pebble labeled INT-01 is a diamond in the rough. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other members of the public who wish to comment on item 6.1? Did we receive any written comments for this item?
No, Mayor.
Okay, public comment is closed. We'll turn to council members for discussion. This is a study session, members. It's just your opportunity to ask staff questions on the draft CIP. It will be before you for formal adoption in June when we take up the budget. Are there any members who wish to ask questions or give comments on the CIP draft? Member Pryforce?
Hi, Josie, are you still there?
Okay. She is. Wait, hold on. Can we unmute her, please, so she can answer a question if there's one? There you go.
Yes, I'm still here.
Gotcha. Okay, so yeah, I didn't know that. Okay, cool. Good to know. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So so I actually ask council members if we can delay some of the, in terms of this, you know what? Never mind. So because there, I, you know, for me, I'm trying to engage a lot more with folks around Emeryville, residents and workers, around what they feel we need, rather than it being less of sort of council member wishlist. And but we, if we do decide to move up, move over to the next step, then there are a couple of things that have come up. So one is the, is that if, that in the, that in the presentation, most of the, in terms of values that were related to equity, the ones that were mentioned were the sustainable streetscapes, street maintenance, the ATP, Active Transportation Plan, the park projects, greening, the, you know, the park studies, Northwest Linear Park. And so if anyone were to come to me and say, hey, in your CIP, what are what are the equity projects? And I told, and I described that to them, they were pretty, they would laugh at me. And, you know, and I think that a lot of them, either we add transportation as a as a value, and then we can place them under that, or or maybe equality of life, or even when it comes to climate. But the, you know, the definition of equity, the term equity refers to fairness and justice, and is distinguished from equality. Whereas equality means providing the same to all. Equity means recognizing that we do not all start from the same place and must acknowledge and make adjustments to imbalances. The process is ongoing, requiring us to identify and overcome intentional and unintentional barriers arising from bias or systemic structures. And so and a lot of the projects that were described that were attached to the term equity didn't, that was not the impression I came across. That that came across to me. So for example, something related to, let's say, creating, like, sort of BMR or some of our zero to 50 meter meter income, AMI, residents being able to afford broadband, or being, or our senior residents better, better ways for them to be able to communicate, maybe better cell phones or or maybe even also related to to broadband, like something that closes, so something that closes the gap. And so so if a wealthy person is benefiting from the same as our lowest income residents, that's not exactly equity. Everyone benefits, so it's a quality of life. And so so I, so I would like for us to look at what we, what projects are actually ones that are helping to close gaps, help helping to give people the leg up so that every, so that people will feel that our public spaces and our and our infrastructure projects and, and so, so, yes, yeah. So that's what, that was my impression from the from the presentation. And I also agree when it comes to our our website and also ways to improve engagement. Once again, focused on those who are less likely or have greater barriers when it comes to engaging our, engaging City Hall, engaging the City Council. If we are, as we're doing our website updates, that we are improving it towards increasing that level of engagement. And so in those, in that and and several ideas that I have, but the the main theme, the gist of it, is projects that are actually equitable as opposed to we're just assigning that as a value. And and I don't think it would actually survive a snuff test as when it comes to how we define equity. Or maybe equity is defined differently for different people. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others who wish to comment? Vice Mayor Walsh?
Josie Stalon, correct. Could staff remind me about the CIP survey? How long was the survey available to the to the public?
Yes, so let me find the exact date. I believe, yes, okay, it was open February 21st to March 30th, 2023. And we received 122 responses. Over 100 people selected that they live in Emeryville, although there were also other options that were about traveling through Emeryville or working in Emeryville, so it wasn't a one-to-one. But over 100 people selected that they live in Emeryville out of the 20, 122 people who took the survey.
And these draft, these this draft of the new projects, these came from what you had received in the survey, correct?
So the survey was asking people to prioritize the draft list of projects. It did not include an opportunity for new projects to be suggested. That time was during January, during the committee opportunities. And so we did, though, once people filled out the survey and reviewing the results, we did, it did impact two of our projects. So I can pull those up. Let's see, so the Facility Inventory Study and the Powell Hollis Redesign Project, those two projects were removed from the discrete projects list because they received almost no votes or no priority votes. And then the Paid Parking and Transportation Demand Management Management Project also received low rankings. It's remained in the CIP, but it's currently an unfunded project.
So the survey determined the priority. So the priority has been led by the public versus the council. Is that what your, is is that correct, Josie?
The pri, the input from the public helped us prioritize discretionary projects. It gave us a sense of what was more important to people. But it, because the survey only asked participants to rank discretionary projects, not to give input on mandatory or active and assigned projects. It it helped us rank the projects, but it's not like a one-to-one in terms of what was rated highest in the survey. It's not the top priority necessarily. Because it, in each category, that there are projects that were discretionary, mandatory, and active and assigned, and we just asked for input on the discretionary projects. I'll say, though, that there is, there is not like a priority in the CIP. If it's in the CIP, it got prioritized. If it has funding attached to it, it has funding attached to it. I think the challenge that could arise would be just staff capacity, that we will not have the capacity to begin every project that is in the CIP. But you'll see many projects are already labeled as active and assigned, and those are the ones that will be moving forward first because those are the ones that have staff and funding actively assigned to them and working on them.
But there was community, there was, oh, sorry.
Actually, let the Vice Mayor finish, please.
Oh, thank you. So just to be clear, the community did have some say in what we're reviewing today?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Aloe?
Yeah, as as a clarification to your question, earlier in her slideshow, she showed a series of steps. And I think what we're, what we were trying to do is essentially provide information to the council on what community priorities were. But then ultimately, the prioritization and, you know, approval is in council council hands.
And may I just ask for your your clarification or agreement with what I'm hearing, the question being, what I'm hearing the answers be? I don't think what was covered well at the beginning that might just need some clarification. The distinction between mandatory, active, and discretionary projects. So an active project being one that we already have underway or that we're working on, a mandatory one being one that we need to do in order to maintain a service or a facility that's critical to the city's needs, and a discretionary project being one that city vital services do not depend on, but for which the community may wish to have that project as a new inventory item, as a benefit in the community. Is that correct?
Well described. Thank you.
Okay, and so what the question I heard was about the role the public played in the process and what what Josie's answer speaks to, and Josie, you can correct me if I'm misstating you, is that mandatory projects were not put out for the approval of the public because whether we replace the storm drain or the sewer, which we have agreements with other legal entities to do on Powell Street, is a mandatory project. So it's there, it has to still obtain funding, it will take staff time. So it goes in the CIP because it's a critical project that the council could still provide some discretion about when to fund or when to construct. But it's different than a discretionary project, like what the Parks Committee submitted, which is to do nature play and other types of infrastructure improvements to accommodate children's needs, which is a discretionary project. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, so.
Yes, that is correct.
And so the public's input was to help identify and prioritize which discretionary projects they would like to see most included in the CIP, Josie. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, so I hopefully have helped. The conversation I've heard, just trying to seam that together for everyone. Does that help you with your question? Okay. Are there others with questions or comments? Member Pry, actually, Member Moore?
I had a question about the, so we just heard the glowing endorsement of the the INT-01 project from the Chair of our Commission on Aging. In particular, the that project that includes a redesign of the website, which would make it more accessible to seniors and those who might have difficulty otherwise navigating. So would something like that also check a box for equity, unless I'm misunderstanding? Is that something that could be updated?
City Manager?
Thank you, Councilmember Moore, for that question. Yeah, the, I think the answer to that is yes, that updating an out-of-date website does, it is an equity project because it makes it more available to people who might not be able to access the website if they had visual impairment or had other difficulties using the website.
Thank you.
Member Pryforce?
Yes, I believe that what the suggestion that I made during my last comment, that Councilmember Moore better addressed, is how we classify projects and discretionary projects. And so if projects are are classified as being equitable, but may not necessarily be equitable, then then we reclassify them. And then if we reclassify them and we look at it from a strong equity lens, and if no one knows what it is, and maybe my view of equity may be different from this person's and that person's view of equity, then we talk to some experts who can help us with that. Then then as the the point that Councilmember Moore raised with the website and the rest site, and I agree, that the website becoming much more accessible, it would make it, would would classify that as equitable. And because it's been identified, it's been identified that there's a population that's been targeted, and we're helping to close the gap. And so and in relation to what Councilmember Welsh talked about in terms of the the feedback and how we collect information, that embedded in the the structure of white supremacy in America is that it's embedded in our laws, it's embedded in some aspects of our culture, especially as it comes to governance. And so if someone, so if when the census says, do you do you identify as Hispanic? Or white, non-Hispanic? And then and then those who don't identify themselves with it, then sometimes will just throw away the census because they're saying, this was not really built for me. This was not really designed for me. And so their participation then dwindles. And so what is the responsibility of government? The responsibility of government is to be able to take, take that, is be able to take that feedback, but also have a, also have a view and a perspective that is well-informed, to be able to say, how are we asking questions? How are we surveying? So for example, if we were honest with ourselves and say, you know what? Maybe this doesn't seem like an equitable project. And maybe we don't actually have a whole lot of equitable projects. Maybe we need to place a place before the public, an equity-based survey. And 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 share, yeah, we're looking at ways that we can make Emeryville more equitable in terms of discretionary projects. And then so then it's not, it's not the fault of 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 the public because we didn't ask the right questions. And 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 it's a bit unfair, which is what equity is addressing. It's a bit unfair for us to 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 push a non-equitable process. And and so I think that that's where I'm coming from. And, and so I think that that's where um, I'm coming from, is that perhaps we need to, to, for first, classify, like, look at how we classify projects. And then second, as a follow-up to, um, to Councilmember Welch's projects, maybe we need to change the way in terms of when we're asking, if we want, if you want equitable uh, data on equity, maybe we need to uh, ask questions and survey in an equitable way, um, where we can collect that kind of data, we can collect that kind of information, and, and give the opportunity for the public to be able to uh, provide some ideas. And perhaps maybe even some, a little information as to what equity means. And so then we're actually providing in, uh, information, uh, so, you know, uh, it's, it's some education. And then, and then we let the uh, public uh, decide. And I think that that is a, a much more equitable approach to how uh, we move forward in terms of, and not just how we classify discretionary projects, but also collect ideas as to what projects uh, can, uh, that, that we can place in our CIP that help close the gap.
Others with comments, Member Cor, Carr, sorry.
No worries. Um, I do have a comment regarding the difference between the discretionary and the mandatory, uh, especially regarding the uh, greening projects. Uh, the whole world, the earth is in a uh, zone of climate crisis, and those projects are termed discretionary in the um, CIP. I think at least the Tree Program should be a mandatory um, project because of the climate emergency that the world is facing.
Can I ask if staff would explain what criteria they use to put a category, a, a project into mandatory category, please?
Uh, so as clarification, if it was generally related to maintaining something that already exists, um, or if we did not perform that wor, uh, work, it would um, create immediate problematic outcomes. And then gen, it, it was, so if it fell, fell into that category, it would have been mandatory, that description would have been mandatory, and if not, it would have been discretionary. So we, to, to be fair, we did not think of these overarching policy, large-scale policy questions. Uh, we kind of kept it at a very technocratic understanding of those two um, words, and we are open for comment from, and direction from council.
So I think the way I would try to summarize what I heard is that you are um, taking projects that we already were maintaining, in other words, we are, we already have them in an inventory of things that we take care of. Um, or there are things that we would, that would not require a, they wouldn't begin the process. In other words, we wouldn't need to do the study and design and production of them. We're actually, actually on, it's an ongoing thing that we have an obligation to do. And so you weren't making a deep policy decision in determining something mandatory versus discretionary. You just kind of took things that we are treating as an ongoing thing and treated them as the mandatory things that we already do, and you put all the other things that have been either council or public proposals as the discretionary items.
Generally, yes.
Do you have further, further questions or comments on that?
Thank you, I appreciate the explanation that it came from a technical viewpoint. Just, I just want to know if we could put these projects under a different category from a policy viewpoint? Or, or prioritize some of these from a policy viewpoint? Uh, I understand this, that the staff has done, and I comment the staff for doing the excellent job that they have in putting everything together and doing what they do on a daily basis to keep the city going. I, I do um, see that you as staff members are very, we're very much vested in the welfare of the city, and I appreciate it very, very much. Uh, I just want to make sure that from a policy viewpoint, some of these projects are determined to be mandatory. Um, some of these actually jive in together with the paving program, and, and they could easily be um, prioritized or moved forward.
I have, I have a thought on that if you're interested.
Sure.
Um, in my experience with the CIP, um, by adopting it, which we would do in June, anything that's in here, we have basically said this is a project the city is going to undertake. So that's part of why we did this process, and you heard Josie mention there were some things that we did, we took out, right? There was a couple that she took out, um, there's a couple that didn't get any votes for prioritization on the discretionary list. So they put in here the things, um, so I, I, I would just say that by approving it, if it's in the plan, the benefit of it being in a plan is most grant funding, um, the competitive grants and the things we do, they require that you have something in a plan. And the benefit of having this plan and approving and updating it as we do, is we have something that staff, when they apply for grants, can point to and say, the council has, as a policy matter, adopted this plan, which has in it this vision for the city that includes this or that project. Um, so I, I appreciate uh, the, the wanting to create the policy distinction about how we prioritize. And we very mu, we very well could, as a matter of action today in guidance at the study session, we could go, tell staff to go back and create a whole nother layer in the document. Um, I personally don't know that we need to do that because I think when you see it play out, what will happen is it sits in the CIP, and when money becomes available to us, either that's um, unassigned funds like we did with the, the budget item on the trees, um, or uh, grant monies become available, and they come into the, into the, the fund, the CIP fund. Um, the staff then can, they give us periodic updates on the status of each of these projects, and we have the ability to give the priority at any meeting to direct to move forward with a project and line it up with, to your point, um, we want to do a streetscape, and we want to do part of our tree project at the same time. Or we want to do um, information technology along with an upgrade to the senior center or something like that. We can take these projects and put them together and do that, um, and it gives us that flexibility. And these, these markers that say mandatory or discretionary, um, I understand the technical reason why they're there. I think they have, they have created questions tonight, right? For people who want to understand why we, we use those terms, and it's a healthy discussion why we use those terms. And there's maybe a better way of categorizing them, um, to think about for staff. But I would just say that we could do what you're asking. My experience is that as long as it's in the plan, it is then essentially a priority. Because if it's not in the plan, it's not an item staff expect to work on, unless we were to give special action. Go ahead. You're off the mic, there you go.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate the response, and I am a little bit more assured now that that would qualify us for the grants that we are seeking, that if we just put it in the plan, that, that itself should suffice. I appreciate that, thanks.
Putting it in the plan is extremely helpful. Other questions or comments? I'm just want to express my support uh, for the draft CIP. I want to thank the Public Works Department, and in particular Josie, for all her work on the public process with the committees and the public outreach process and the community engagement. And I want to thank the committees themselves uh, for their work on putting this forward. Uh, express strong support for um, these items. I want to especially thank the Commission on Aging and the Parks and Recreation Committee uh, for their work. And I know that when we get to um, doing the information technology upgrade, uh, one of the things I've heard in seven years uh, is the distinction between the background colors and the font colors, the sizes of the fonts, the uh, clickability and usability of some of the interfacing. So I know we have some IT people sitting over here in the room, and when, um, when we, when we were able to take that project off the ground, we will have a robust community engagement process for that. We have public comment one time on items, otherwise I have to do that on all the items, I apologize. But you're welcome to submit any follow-up comments you have to us via email, and share that with our city manager, it'll go to all the department heads, and I appreciate you uh, being here for that. Any further comments or questions, Member Pryforce briefly?
Yes, uh, just to add, um, so when it, when it, that's, that's nothing technical. Um, so when I used to work uh, with the, uh, the Obama Administration's broadband initiative, they used to talk about um, that laptops and desktop computers are pretty much just fading away. Um, I mean thankfully, maybe because of uh, Chromebooks, uh, like, like Councilmember Moore, um, they can sort of come back. Um, but usually it's in a school setting, and so being able to uh, access the website through a phone, um, and having it stable through the phone, and have it, be able to go through the security measures that it takes for them to be able to access information through a phone is really, uh, it's really important. And surprisingly, uh, for a lot of households, um, uh, with the exception of, of the phone, the actual entertainment entity is their PS5 or Xbox. And, but unfortunately, a lot of government websites don't allow the browsers that are in some of those gaming systems to be able to access. And so being able to uh, uh, mitigate some of the things that come with uh, too much security on a website that would prevent that, so it was just uh, technical.
Okay, thank you, are there any further comments on the capital improvement program? Okay, seeing none, we will conclude that, and we have a second study session. Members, this is the discussion on the preliminary budget for fiscal years twenty-four and twenty-five. And Lawrence, before you come too far to the microphone, I just want to, um, I want to pause because we're set to have our um, redevelopment meeting and our council meeting in five minutes. And I just want to ask, in the interest of that agenda and the people, I, there's all kinds of people walking in for, I'm assuming, grants. So my question is, is there anybody who's obje, who objects to me, maybe Lawrence is the only one, uh, recessing this meeting so that we can timely take up those two meetings, deal with all the public members who will be here for the other item, and then I can come back to this meeting. We can have the second study session at the end of what is a short council meeting. Is that okay with everybody? So that we don't delay the public's interest in being here this evening. So Lawrence, next beer is on me. Um, and uh, so members, I'm going to recess the special study session. Madam Clerk, the time is seven-ten, this meeting is in a recess to be continued this evening. And so we will have a five-minute. Okay, we have a five-minute break for um, members up at the board here if you want to use the restroom. And then we'll do the redevelopment agency briefly, folks. We'll have the council meeting with the public agenda item on it, and then I'll come back to the study session, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Seven fifteen PM, are we recording?
Recording in progress.
Okay, we'll do that one more time. The time is seven fifteen PM, I'd like to call to order the City of Emeryville a successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format, members of the public are welcome to join us, thirteen thirty-three Park Avenue here at the Civic Center, or they may join us online via Zoom, and they can participate by using the raise hand feature on Zoom or pressing star nine if joining by phone. Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll call?
Councilmember Carr.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Present.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Here.
And Mayor Bouters.
Here, thank you, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda for the redevelopment agency.
I move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Thank you, motion by Welch, second by Carr to approve the agenda, please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters.
Aye, ex parte communications, seeing and hearing none. Public comment for consent agenda, item's not on this agenda. Member of the public wishing to comment on the redevelopment agency has two minutes to do so. Do we have any written comment cards received?
No, Mayor.
Okay, public comment is closed, consent calendar, is there any member wishing to poll or discuss the consent item? Seeing and hearing none, is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I move consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you, motion by Welch, second by Carr to approve the consent calendar, please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters.
Aye, the consent calendar is approved, there are no action items. Madam Clerk, seven sixteen, that meeting is adjourned. Time is seven sixteen PM, I call to order this meeting of the City Council of the City of Emeryville on ta, today, Tuesday, May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format, members of the public are welcome to join us at City Hall. You may also participate by joining us via Zoom and using the raise hand feature on your Zoom bar or pressing star nine by phone to provide comment at the appropriate times. Member, uh, Madam Clerk, please note that all members remain present. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the final agenda for this meeting.
I move a gen, the, uh, what, I move approval of the final agenda.
Second.
Are you sure you want to second that one, okay. Uh, motion by Vice Mayor Welch, second by Councilmember Carr to approve the agenda, please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters.
Aye, thank you, um, we have one special order of the day. Item four-point-one is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Emeryville recognizing the month of May as Affordable Housing Month. I will give this proclamation very briefly here. Proclamation recognizing May as Affordable Housing Month. Building communities and building power is this month's, this year's theme. Whereas quality of affordable housing is vital to healthy, safe, vibrant and diverse communities. And whereas even before current high inflation rates, increasing housing costs led longtime residents to be displaced, live in overcrowded homes or experience homelessness, threatening our region's racial diversity and economic opportunity. And whereas the state of California's COVID-nineteen emergency declaration has been terminated, and the short-term protections afforded to renters, including eviction moratoria during the pandemic, are coming to an end, requiring long-term sustainable solutions to promote housing security and mitigate mass displacement. And whereas stable, affordable homes are a solution to homelessness and support seniors, families, youth, veterans and people with disabilities or special needs, and our whole community. And whereas the city received a triple-A credit rating from Standard and Poor's with a social bond designation and successfully sold fifty million dollars of affordable housing bonds in May of twenty-twenty-three, which will provide funding for development of affordable housing, prevent the displacement of vulnerable populations in Emeryville, including low and moderate income households, veterans, seniors and people living with disabilities, provide supportive housing for people who experience homelessness, and help low and middle-income households purchase homes to stay in our community. And whereas the city was one of the first Bay Area jurisdictions to have its six-cycle housing element approved, which is our plan to meet our housing needs for our community. And we are now accountable to implement programs and policies that promote affordable development and affirmatively further fair housing for low-income communities and the communities of color we serve. And whereas the city received a pro-housing designation. communities of color we serve. And whereas the city received a pro-housing designation from the California Department of Housing and Community Development for its pro-housing designation program for adopting positive housing policies, which demonstrate a commitment to improving housing availability in our city. And whereas local housing organizations are continuing to recognize May as Bay Area Affordable Housing Month because regional action to a growing regional crisis is an essential part of recovery from the pandemic and the work to ensure that everyone has an affordable and stable home. And whereas East Bay Housing Organizations has organized Affordable Housing Week for 27 years, acknowledging the need for and the benefits of affordable housing. Now therefore be it proclaimed that as Mayor of the City of Emeryville and on behalf of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, I hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 as Affordable Housing Month in the City of Emeryville, and is further proclaimed that the City of Emeryville will continue to work to support affordable and stable housing at the local, regional, state, and federal levels, proclaimed on this the 16th day of May 2023 by the Mayor of Emeryville. And I'll just invite members, if you have a brief comment on Affordable Housing Month, you're welcome to make that comment now if you'd like. Okay, we'll move to the agenda items. Thank you for that. Announcements of commission and committee vacancies, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to let the council know that there was another resignation on the Commission on Aging, so they are down to their four members, which will make their quorum, since you guys reduced their, their quorum number. We just opened the recruitment period. The applications are available on the website. It began on May 12th, and the application period will close on June 26th. Sent the information out to all of the commission and committee secretaries to share widely with their group, and we posted a public notice of it.
Okay, thank you. Committee, council members, special announcements for reports on meetings that they've attended. Are there any regional board meetings that you've attended that you'd like to report on? I will just report, hopefully not too prematurely, that the Alameda County Transportation Commission had its committee meetings this past week, and the big item every two years is the Capital Investment Plan. This year, the Alameda County Transportation Commission had $150 million of discretionary grant funds that it was able to award to cities. There were about $262 million of project proposals made, so a lot of projects did not get funded. In my time on the Emeryville City Council, and in the five to 10 years I know before that, the city, I think the most we ever got in a given year was somewhere between three and $4 million in, in funding. I'm very pleased to report that the City of Emeryville, the committees have recommended approving the expenditure plan, which includes almost $12 million for Emeryville, which will include funding for the completion of the 40th Street redesign project, and extension of the Doyle Street Greenway protections down south, further onto Doyle Street. It will include money for safety improvements on San Pablo Avenue, and it will include the general fund benefit to extend the Emery around services to people in the city. So that final vote will take place next Thursday at the Alameda County Transportation Commission. Other announcements that members need to make? Okay, seeing and hearing none. The city managers report?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Item eight, ex parte communications. Are there any items on this agenda members wish to report an ex parte communication for? I'll start with Member Mora.
I had a ex parte communication with, for item 12.1. I met with Rob Arias of the Emeryville Historical Society about their application.
Okay.
For the grant.
Member Pryforce, do you have any?
Yes, I also met with Rob, yeah, and he expressed concern that, that the Emeryville Historical Society may not be funded because of political motivations by the council.
Okay. Member Carr?
Rob Arias reached out to me, however, we did not meet.
Okay, anyone else? All right, so those are the ex parte communications. Item nine is public comment for the consent agenda, or items not on this agenda. Any member of the public who wishes to comment for an item not on tonight's agenda or on the consent agenda will have two minutes to comment. Does there any member of the public here for the consent agenda? No? Public comment? No? Okay. All right, item 10, public comment. Oh, we have a hand online, I'm sorry. Can we please recognize Sharon Wiltshire now for two minutes? Good evening. She took her hand down, so I'm guessing maybe she's for another item.
I put her hand on, Mayor.
Oh, Sharon, if you'd like to unmute.
Now can you hear me?
We can hear you now. Go ahead.
I'm so sorry. I'm having all kinds of computer problems. I just wanted to announce that the call to entry for the 37th Annual Emeryville Art Exhibition in the mail, many people received it today, but people can also go to our website, which is emeryarts.org to get further information about call to entry. It's open to anyone who lives or works in Emeryville, and we look forward, we've already had some new names come in, and that's always very exciting to us, so I just wanted to, to put that out there. Looking forward to this coming October. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who wish to comment for non-agenda items? We received no written comments?
Mayor, we did receive one non-agenda online speaker card.
Okay, could you please read?
Yes. "At last month's city council meeting, Councilmember Pryforce made a statement that he stands with the ability to use CEQA to stop housing projects in the people of Berkeley that are using it to obstruct housing at People's Park. This week, the council member got his wish, as due mostly to delays caused by CEQA obstructionists. The housing project that would have provided permanent supportive housing, including 125 beds to homeless and very low-income people, lost its grant money. This project would have provided housing to all of the unhoused residents of People's Park, providing them an opportunity to get roofs over their heads and warm beds to sleep in. Instead, this development has lost its developer, and all of the unhoused residents of People's Park, who were provided motels as the construction progressed, are now instead going to be told that they have to go back to their encampment because people like Pryforce fought hard to deny them housing. This is your victory. Your site has successfully prevented the unhoused from being housed and stopped the gentrification of giving warm beds and support to the homeless population. You should not be allowed to call yourself a progressive if you would rather people live on the streets than use the land that they are already living on to provide them with the ability to reintegrate into society through proper stability. This goes against everything the City of Emeryville stands for, and I'm deeply disappointed and embarrassed that someone like this has a position of power. I want to thank the rest of the council for affirming that CEQA should be reformed to act as an actual environmental bill rather than a tool used to stop any housing or transportation project that any single person doesn't like." This comment was submitted anonymously using just their email.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments? No? Okay. We have items 10.1 through 10.8 on the consent calendar. Are there any members who wish to pull those items for further debate or discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I move the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion by Vice Mayor, motion by Vice Mayor Welch, and a second by Councilmember Mora to approve 10.1 through 10.8. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bauders.
Aye, thank you. There are no public hearings under Section 11 of the agenda. That takes us to item 12, action items. Item 12.1 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville adopting the community grant subcommittee recommendations to select a number of listed nonprofits here and other groups for the community grant programs awards. Rebecca Sermano. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. One second, let me get myself situated here. Okay, let me make sure it works. Oh, there we go. Okay. Okay, here we go. Good evening, Mayor Bauders, Vice, Vice Mayor Welch, and fellow council members. Thank you so much. I'm here to present recommendations from the Community Grants Program Selection Subcommittee. A little history. The Community Grants Program was established almost 25 years ago as a means of promoting the cultural and artistic aspects of the community and to provide a high-quality living and working environment here in the City of Emeryville. Prior to 2013, the Community Grant Program was non-competitive, with requests for funding limited to a set number of community organizations that received the same level of funding each year. In December 2016, after an extensive review of process with staff, the council approved the newly updated application and guidelines. There was a pause, though, in 2020 and 2021, unfortunately, due to COVID. Purpose. Each year, the Community Grant Awards are made to eligible arts and culture organizations and individuals to fund diverse programming that benefits the greater Emeryville community. These grants support the creative life of Emeryville. The program expands public access to literary, video, and film, culinary, historic, and performing arts and events in our community by supporting the work of the individual artists, organizations. The city welcomes applications from a variety of nonprofit organizations or individuals or organizations that obtain a fiscal agent sponsor. Previous grants have been awarded to community service providers, groups, and are associated, that are associated with arts, youth, seniors, and special event programs. The process. A community grant subcommittee of two public art committee members and two parks and recreation committees are designated to review the applications and make recommendations to you, the city council. These applications for programs and events will occur in fiscal year 23, 24. Community grant applications launched on January 23rd and were due on February 28th, and we received 13 qualified applications. The Community Grant Selection Subcommittee met on April 26th, where all applicants who attended were given the opportunity to share their vision with that committee. This year was a very competitive process, and it was a difficult deliberation as all applicants brought unique experiences and opportunities for our community. So the financial part of it. All applicants can apply for up to $10,000, and they must provide a detailed budget that shows the proposed expenses and projected income. Total budget for awarding of grants is not to exceed $73,500. And on our final slide is the breakdown of amounts requested as well as the subcommittee's recommended recipients. There are also several application representatives here tonight and as well online, and if you have any questions, I'm, I'm open to. Unfortunately, this evening, none of the committee members were able to attend to answer any of your questions, but I'm happy to help in any way.
Okay, are there other slides beyond this one?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Ha ha, there you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Rebecca on the process or the, the slide presentation that she provided? I just have one question, which is, so when we make awards to recipients, they've provided, you know, the estimated cost, they, I noticed all in the application packets, they provide a number of things to you as staff. So what, what do we do, you know, for a program like Scientific Adventures for Girls, which says it will provide, you know, scholarships to X number of girls? Do they actually report back on that to us? Is that a requirement of the grant to tell us how many students they served? If they don't serve the number of students they proposed, does that money go back into the fund? As I know, some larger agencies actually re-claw back money that doesn't get used by a grant. So I'm just curious how we do that.
That's a great question. So there is a process where they have to submit a worksheet that the end of the process to how much they spent, who was, who was covered, to make sure that all of the requirements have been met. Any money that hasn't been used, they would be required to pay back to us, but it does not go back into, it doesn't progressively add on to next budget year. So it would just go back into general.
General fund. Okay, great. Others who have clarifying questions? Member Carr?
Yes, I have a clarifying question regarding the, the funding that was given to Jazz. They got almost double of what they requested, whereas some of the people did not even get close to what they requested.
Yeah, that's a good question. So as the interviews went on, one of the things that came up is if the, the committee asked if they had more money, would they offer more opportunity for Jazz on Sundays? And they said yes. So the committee felt that they want to give more money towards the Friends of Golden Gate Library so that they can offer more than just one date to, into our community for Jazz on Sundays.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Others? Member Pryforce?
Uh, do we have, there were some that popped up, but do we have the operating budgets for all of those who applied? Yeah, and I know that maybe some may not, like, maybe not applicable, like the library or something.
No, absolutely, absolutely. They all submitted operating budgets. That was in the large, the very large packet that was in there, and also email you received this afternoon regarding some technical difficulties with that large packet, and those ones that weren't properly established were emailed to you this afternoon.
Any other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Did we get a chance to get the history of, is it in there? Sorry.
Yeah, actually, we do, and I think April will pull it up if you'd like to see that. So we have to 2017. Oh, do I need to do that? So you can see here on the screen, you, starting with the 2022, last year's grants, you can see all of the organizations that received monies. And as you scroll down, you can see, obviously, 21 and 2020 were skipped. Here is 2019. Looks like a word got cut off, but the, that word is grant. And then as continuing to scroll down, 2018, and then 2017.
Can I, like, write down the orgs, just from a quick scan, the orgs that have never received funds from us? Sort through the grant, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, so I see what you're saying. As far as the ones that are currently?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Great question. I can share that, I believe Stage Bridge.
Okay.
Compound Gallery. Although I believe Big Daddy's Community Garden has been a fiscal sponsor before, this is a new program and project. And I believe the Emeryville Historical Society and Pro Arts, the Mouth of Temescal Watershed. Oh, and so sorry, and Children in Nature. Thank you.
Yeah, I was about to say that.
Just informed by, by Call of Arts. They were there twice, I apologize.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll turn to public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on item 12.1 will have two minutes to do so each. If you would like to make a comment, you can just line up in the center of the room here, going back towards the doors, and I'll just call you up one at a time. So the first speaker, you're welcome to come up. When you hear April start your clock, your two minutes is up, or goes on, and when it beeps, that's when your time is up, and I'll ask you to move on, okay? So go ahead and just introduce yourself and speak into the mic, and you have your two minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening to all members of the Emeryville City Council. My name is Isabella Miller, and I'm the Program Director of the Berkeley Film Foundation. We are a grant and educational nonprofit that exists to support the independent filmmaking community on the east shore cities of the Bay Area. I want to start by acknowledging the incredible generosity of the City of Emeryville, and thank you for your partnership over the past six years, having been recipients of the Community Arts Grant since 2017. Thanks to the support, BFF has given $55,000 in grants to six filmmakers who live or work in Emeryville. Of these six projects, five have, have been completed and premiered at international film festivals, and one is to premiere later this year. The Berkeley Film Foundation's awards, including the Emeryville Community Grant, are provided directly to the filmmaker. They use it to pay other artists such as editors, composers, sound engineers, graphic designers, or camera operators, many of whom are local collaborators. This means that the grant money stays inside the community, which strengthens, strengthens the area as an artistic hub as a whole. The money we provide also plays another important role. We understand that our grant is just a drop in the larger bucket of funds that the artist needs, but if we support them early enough in production, films are often able to raise money from other organizations more quickly. A grant from BFF serves as a high endorsement of the project's efforts and encourages other organizations to get behind it. The Berkeley Film Foundation's 2023 grant cycle just closed yesterday, and we have received three very promising applications from Emeryville-based filmmakers who need help to finish their projects. We hope and respectfully ask that you include the Berkeley Film Foundation in your grant pool this year so we can fund more outstanding filmmakers. We would love to continue this longstanding partnership with you. So thank you very much, and I'm happy to answer any questions offline.
Thank you. You probably don't know how you use the clock, but if the public, can they see the clock and the time, how much is left?
No, she had three seconds left.
Okay, just, if there's a way to turn it so that they can see it, I don't know if you can do that. Can they see it on our clock? Just because I, I noticed she kept looking over to check it, and I just think, I just think people were trying to see how much time they have. Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment.
No problem.
Okay, next speaker, please. Good evening.
My name's Michael Jones. I'll just let you guys pass this around. I'm from the Friends of the Golden Gate Library. I'm the president of Friends of the Golden Gate Library at this point. And I just wanted to thank you guys for the support you've given over the years to our Jazz program there at, at the park. So we appreciate it and I hope we can continue to do it and do some more. And that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Questions you have?
If we have questions, we can ask after the public comment is over. Thank you so much. Hi, next speaker, you're welcome to come up. Good evening.
Hello, everyone. I'm Nancy Karp, Director of the Dance Company Nancy Karp and Dancers, and we've made Emeryville our home for the last 42 years. And I'd like to thank this wonderful body, this council, for supporting our program in the schools and our public performances over the years here in Emeryville. And this year, we're planning to expand our program in terms of weeks. In the past, we've had our program for eight to 10 weeks at Annie Yates School, where we have professional dancers, dance teachers, working with the classrooms. Normally it's eight to 10 weeks. This year, we're planning to go for 12 weeks. We're also planning to include the first graders as well as the second and third graders. The, the classes meet every week, the teachers participate. This past year, even the principal of Annie Yates participated, and that was very exciting for us. The classes culminate in a performance by the students for their parents in Building A on the, at the facility, and we have standing room only. It's a very exciting event. In addition, we coupled that with inviting the students who are participating to come to the Emeryville Art Exhibition, the annual art exhibition, to come and see the professional dance company that I direct perform a site-specific, a piece made specifically for the exhibition site. And it's a really thrilling, especially last year, we had, I think, there were, for every sixth child, there was a parent who, who came and accompanied them. So the children get to see the dance performance as well as the art exhibition. It's a wonderful field trip for all of them. So thank you for your support and I encourage you to support us again. Any questions, I guess, for later?
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, next speaker. Good evening.
I'm Patty Weber and I'm with the Emeryville Children in Nature Project. We are grateful the committee has, the subcommittee has recommended 4,500 for our project. We know there are lots of great projects out there to fund, so luckily we have flexibility if we don't get the full 10,000 requested. However, we still want to comment on the biggest concerns from the subcommittee, which seem to be with the budget. From their deliberations, it seemed, they didn't seem to think the proposed project required time or money, yet the main reason the city has not yet proceeded with the Children Nature Program themselves is because of the significant cost and effort that would be required. The project will generate tangible supplies of natural materials for community organizations, provide training for ECL staff, produce nature pop-up events for kids to attend, and pilot a real nature area at a city park. This project can be a catalyst for the city to launch their own program, so it also includes a compilation of resources to help the city move forward. Creating equitable access, access to nature is majorly growing movement in our country because the data is clear. A connection to nature critically improves our health and our planet. California Senate Bill 1425 even mandates the city provide equitable access to nature in the near future. These programs are worthwhile and necessary. The plan for this project was developed from advice from local children nature experts, ideas taken from discussions at Parks and Rec meetings, and hearing priorities from Emeryville's Community Services Department. The subcommittee was particularly concerned about the largest budget item, which was to pay a project manager and resource coordinator. We expect that the proposed budget will evolve as we get our network to find donations of volunteers and determine what will and will not be needed to be paid for, and find ways to expand our reach within the funds we have. However, it would actually be ideal if the budget does mostly go to managing and coordinating volunteers, donations and free natural materials, as that would get us the most bang for our buck. Our group is very well-connected with the leaders of the robust San Francisco Children Nature Program. We have a collaborative relationship with them and anticipate that they will be significant resources requiring minimal fees, if any. We're also connected with firms that have previously offered assistance at reduced rates, and we now have a contact with East Bay Regional Parks District for free natural materials. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Welcome, next speaker. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Tean. It's a pleasure to represent, we perform. I'm the director for the program. And we last received the grant from the Emeryville, Emeryville Community Fund back in 2018, right before the pandemic. And we had summer camp with the kids and it was a wonderful time. We taught them guitar, violin, cello, singing, and we had performances after each session, I mean, after each, the, each group. And, and, and the grouping at that time was, it was a half-day camp. And so, so this year, we're going to mix it up a little bit different. We're going to offer after-school program for the kids at ECL, and we're targeting 48 classes, up to 164 kids will be able to participate in our program. And so we're very excited to bring, I was a former teacher at ECL, and so I, I know the, the, the facility as well and, and know some of the teachers there. And so I'm very happy to be back to work with them. And so all instruments will be provided by our program, free of charge. And we're also going to have, be doing singing, ukulele, recorder for the younger kids, and violin and guitar for the older kids. And so it's going to be an exciting program to bring music back to Emeryville. I know they have been looking for a music teacher for the past two, three years. And, and I'm just happy that I can be a part of it and help out and bring music back to our wonderful community. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, next speaker, welcome.
Hi. My name's Robbie Kendall. I'm a resident of Emeryville. I represent Fishnets and Film, which has been recommended to receive some funds for your Community Arts Grant. I'm also a psychologist, a filmmaker and a drag queen, and I want to thank you all for this opportunity. I've been in Emeryville for 15-plus years and I've been dying for more colorful, inclusive and family-friendly entertainment to come, and I'm very happy to bring that to Emeryville. So again, I want to thank Rebecca and Amber Evans, I don't know if she's here today, for, for, for their guidance and support of this endeavor, so thank you all very much.
Thank you, Robbie. Good evening.
Hi.
My name is Barbara Johnson and I'm representing Stage Bridge. Stage Bridge is the nation's oldest senior theater company, and what we do, we recruit and train seniors to give back to the community. I run the SRO program, and the SRO program takes seniors to assisted living places and we perform there, tell stories, dance, sing. So we've been doing this for over 40-some years, and I've been with Stage Bridge 20-some years, so thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for being here. Are there any other members here in person in the public who would like to give a comment? Okay, we have one hand raised online. Can we recognize the speaker, please, for two minutes? Time is on? Is, is the microphone?
He's, yes, he's unmuted.
Hello. Sorry, I was expecting the video to come up. I guess it's just oddy. Yeah, Rob Arias, I'm the Secretary of the Emeryville Historical Society. I connected with Don Housler and Nancy Smith, I think in about 2016, and I kind of just got sucked into history and realizing that there wasn't really much of a successor to preserving the work that they had done. So I took it upon myself to jump in and bring a lot of what they're doing to, to the internet, social media, built them a website, you know, personally, and have taken on a tedious task of scanning roughly about 1,000 photos online. But what I realized is that I need to help bring the historical society into, connect it with Emeryville better. And so the application that I, that we're applying for is for walking tour. There are some amazing historic sites in Emeryville, and we've devised a kind of walking route that anybody can do. One of the things that I think distinguishes our application from others, and they're all great, is that it asks for the amount of residents served. This serves everybody, and you don't have to have a mobile phone, really, all you have to, you don't even have to be able to walk. You can do this from anywhere in the world, honestly. So not just every resident in Emeryville, but anybody who's ever lived in Emeryville, anybody who's curious about Emeryville, anybody who's staying in a hotel that just wants to learn a little bit more about Emeryville. So the potential of people served by this is almost infallible. So, you know, we're talking, you know, thousands of people. So I think it's a small amount to pay, you know, for this grant, and I think it's going to do a lot of good for the city. I think it's really going to promote it in a way that, you know, improve the city. Thank you.
Do we have any other commenters online?
No, mayor, we do not. We do have one comment though, yes.
Okay, go ahead and read the written comment, please.
Okay.
Hello, Emeryville City Council members. I'm the Executive Director of Holy H2O, a local nonprofit whose mission is to catalyze dynamic, informed connections between people and their watersheds via community and citizen science, art and green infrastructure education. We're writing to express our support for the approval of the community grant for the Emeryville Historical Society's walking tour. Holy H2O hosts tours from Temescal and now adding Sausal, Strawberry, and soon Glen Echo Creeks using the same Pocket Sites platform and are satisfied with the usability of it. We've had over 1,200 folks download our tours in under a year, in addition to the packed in-person tours that we lead every other month in various creek watersheds. We're optimistic that additional tours on the Pocket Sites platform will draw further awareness to our tours and thus our cause. We also would like to develop a fruitful partnership with Emeryville's Historical. We're hoping you'll support the funding the EHS needs to make their tours and our partnership more robust. Best, Elizabeth Doherty, Executive Director.
Okay, thank you. This is the last call for public comment on this item. Okay, seeing no other hands, public comment on this item is closed. We'll turn to members for discussion. Is there any members who wish to make comments or discuss? Member Mora?
I just wanted to commend the Community Grant Subcommittee. I think they, it was a very hard task in front of them and they set up a good process. And as this community grant program gets more and more competitive, I think they've shown that they're up for the task. So thank, thank you so much.
Member Carr?
Sure, I echo David's comments. I'm grateful that the members of the, the community volunteered for this and made the decisions which saved us sometimes. So if, I will defer to my fellow council members for further comments and then make a motion.
Okay. Vice Mayor Welch?
Just adding to my colleagues' comments and just thank you to all the wonderful organizations that applied for this opportunity. It's really wonderful to see how many people want to contribute to the growth in art and just the scene in Emeryville and the amenities available to our residents and visitors. So thank you.
Member Pryforce?
Everybody's awesome. So, so I, I do this for a living and, and one of the things that happens is that behind the scenes, applicants don't usually know what's going on in our heads, like, like what's happening, that sort of thing. So, so the staff made their, their recommendations. So, so I'll share how I sort of view everyone's programs and to what I think would be some, some, some next steps, some good next steps, some recommendations. So one is that, as I mentioned, I, I look at operating budgets. And, and so now the operating budget of the sponsoring agency should be treated differently because if you don't have a File 1C3, or maybe you're not fiscally sponsored, then a sponsoring organization, nonprofit, you know, is necessary. And so that has to be treated. So usually typically in philanthropy, you don't, you know, you don't do both. You don't penalize the, the organization that's being sponsored because of the sponsoring organization's budget. So that's why I look at operating budget, too. I, I look at, of course, first timers, those who are new and getting some of these grants. You know, from, one, of course, from equitable standpoint, and, and also, I kind of have this view on, on startups, right? And I think startups is, is, goes across just tech, right? Is this tech, this startup, nonprofits, they're startup politicians, right? And so, and so startups tend to be sort of the underdog. And so I, I tend to look at that. The other is the alignment between, the alignment between the, the org and current sort of mission-driven programming from the city. And the other I also look at is, is the cohort. That's how we, we look at it, we look at it all as a cohort. And, and so if you have so many orgs doing the same thing, then it, it just doesn't allow for a lot of diversity in terms of the, the portfolio. And so that is sort of how I view why I am going to make the following recommendations. And so, so the following recommendations is that because our budget is very limited, that the 10K, I, I believe that needs to be a bit shaved down in order to bolster a lot of the other, the, a lot of orgs, and so that, so that can bring some, some of their numbers up. So when it comes to, I believe it's the, the head, did we hear from Head Over Heels, Madam Clerk?
No, I don't have them listed as someone who made public comment.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. So Head Over Heels Athletic Arts, I, I, I would recommend that they, they be taken out of their running because it's too close to Nancy Karp and dancers. And so, so I would do that. The, so I actually, I actually thought that Big Daddy's Community Garden was sort of more climate-focused, but, but I didn't know that Fishnets and Queer Film Festival was, was, was the actual project. For some reason, I, I didn't align those. But at the same time, once again, focusing on, on equity, there are a lot of places that, that queer identity, drag identity is not welcomed. And so, so creating a space for that is something that I, I'm excited about that idea. And also, they're, they're new. They haven't gotten a grant before. And so, so I would shave down some of the, the recommendation I would make to my fellow council members is to shave down the 10K. I think 10K is like, yay, we want, we want that 10K. But, but in terms of like actual needs, it may not necessarily, you know, maybe 8K or, or, yeah, or maybe 85, 100. So taking that, some of that money, by eliminating Head Over Heels Athletic Arts, or whoever y'all want to eliminate, then moving some of that money to bolster the, the rest, and the rest seemed fine to me.
I'll make a motion to approve the list. Motion by Mayor Bowders, second by Vice Mayor Welch to approve the list as recommended by the committee. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. The motion passes. Congratulations to all of you who have received grants. I appreciate you coming out this evening for the work you're going to do on behalf of our community and the people that you serve and the very special works that you do. I look forward to Jazz in the park. I'm sorry that we weren't able to have it. I'm sorry, sorry for your loss as well at the Golden Gate Library. Thank you so much. Some exciting new programs coming into, my friends at the Berkeley Film Foundation, love to talk to you offline about how we can find ways to continue your work here in Emeryville. Thank you very much. All right, that'll move us to Agenda Item 13, which will be Department Head Reports. Do we have any?
We don't have any tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Future agenda items. Is there any requests for a future agenda item? Member Pryforce?
Yes, I would place, well, first I want to honor that we are on a lonely land that has been stolen and so it's unceded. And also I'd like to put forward for a future agenda item, adding the Pledge of Allegiance to our, to our, our chamber meetings. And, yeah, and I'll stand up to, to demonstrate that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there three votes to Agenda the Pledge of Allegiance again for the next meeting? Okay, seeing none, are there other future Agenda Item requests from council members? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, the time is 7:59. Council meeting is adjourned. For those of you who don't wish to stay for our study session, we're going to return to. I'll give you a moment. If you'd like to go ahead and leave the council chambers and enjoy the rest of your evening, you're welcome to do that. If you wish to stay for our study session on council goals for 2024, you're welcome to stay. You have a good evening. Thanks so much for coming. Good night. Good night. Thank you for being here. Okay, and as soon as April gives me the cue that we're able to resume, I'll, we'll go ahead and do that. We're good. Okay, so the time is 8 o'clock. I'd like to call back to order from recess, the City Council's Special Study Session. And note that all members remain present. We are going to pick up the Agenda at Item 6.2, which is our last study session item, a study session to discuss the preliminary budget for fiscal years 2024 and 2025, along with council goal setting. Mr. Chu, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Member of the Council. Tonight I'm presenting the revised preliminary budget for fiscal year '24 and '25. Slide 2, please. It's the agenda for tonight's study session. I will discuss the revised revenue and expenditure projection, revised budget summary. And then I'll turn over to the Mayor to discuss the council goal setting. Now, just a high level recap what we have presented in the last council meeting. The first draft of the budget was presented to the council on May the 2nd. The projection include the use of general fund ending fund balance to cover the budget shortfall. We project 1.5 million in FY '24 and 2.7 million in FY '25. Now we look at the revised budget summary. Finance Department has received additional information from departments over the last two weeks. The revised projection increased the budget shortfall by $400,000 in FY '24 and $500,000 in FY '25. I will show you details of the revised revenue and projection on the next two slides. The table below shows the revised budget and the use of general fund ending fund balance of 1.9 million in FY '24 and 3.2 million in FY '25 to close the funding gap. The revised budget also include the transfer of 3.9 million. This amount include 1.8 million to the disaster reserve fund to meet the reserve target of 5 million. 1 million to the Merchant Old Critical Needs Fund. 1 million to the urban chief programs and $100,000 of small business incentive to the Economic Development Fund. After the transfer, the general fund ending fund balance will have a balance of 9.4 million in FY '24 and 6.2 million in FY '25. Now we look at the revised revenue projection. There are two tables. The tables on the top compare the revenue projection between the first draft and the second draft of the budget. And the table at the bottom provide detailed explanation of the changes. We first look at the first column, FY '23. The council approved a contract of WC3 in the last council meeting, which project to bring in revenue of around 1.9 million in building and branch fee. At the same time, the revenue is partially offset by contract cost of 1.6 million, which I will show in the next slide. In FY '24 and FY '25, the budget includes $600,000 annually for the Merchant Old Real Property Transfer Test. Those are all the adjustment for the FY '24 and '25. Now we look at the revised expense projection. Adjustment in FY, adjustment in FY '23 including a 1.6 million contract with WC3 and which is offset by project revenue of 1.9 million. We also project a increase in insurance, surprise, and professional service in FY '23. Adjustment in FY '24 and '25 include additional insurance costs from the John Paul Insurance Authority and IT allocation costs. There are two capital projects related to the IT allocation. The first project is to replace the audio and video equipment in the council chamber to improve broadcast quality and online streaming. The second project is to redesign the city website and expand the electronic document management system workflow. The other adjustment in FY '24 is to transfer $161,000 out of the general fund to the CIP. This is related to the fire station alerting system. Now we look at the revised budget summary. With all the adjustment, FY '24 budget is approximately 2% below the current year budget. In FY '25, proposed general fund budget is around 2.7 million higher. This is mainly due to the increase in the insurance cost. The budget also include the use of general fund ending fund balance of 1.9 million in FY '24 and 3.2 million FY '25 to close the funding gap. And we look at the next step. Staff request the council to provide comments on the revised preliminary budget for the FY '24 and '25. On June the 6th, staff will present the Merchant Old Real Public Transfer Test expansion policy to further clarify the use of the fund. And final budget and the CIP will be presented to the City Council for approval on June the 6th. I'm going to check with the council, do you have any question, before we move on to the council goal setting?
Okay, before we do that, do you, are you giving any presentation on the goal setting or is that going to be? You might as well just briefly give that presentation and then I'll take over when we do the discussion for how we manage that. But you just want to leave up what the goals were from the last, last time around.
But then from the FY '23 of current year budget, we do have nine seven council goal. The first one is to commence the old cop yard remediation construction. And the second goal is to develop affordable housing on free sites. And the next one is to prioritize bicycle and pedestrian focused project on cer- on certain city location. The fourth one is to construct rail safety and quiet songs. Number five is to advance the art center project. Number six is to generate ballot measure to develop additional revenue for the city. And the last one is to electrify the city vehicle fleet. Those are the seven council goal for the current fiscal year.
Okay, I think if you go to one more slide, I think there's a few more. Oh, no, that was it. Okay, thank you. All right, so members, the budget update is the same budget we had at the study session, but we were not with the information on Measure O receipts at that time. So Lawrence has provided us just updated only the slides that needed the Measure O update, which has $600,000 in commercial receipts and $600,000. And you see it right there, the variance proposing those adjustments in the RPTT category with a couple other small explanations. Are there any questions on the revised revenue protection with the, projections with the Measure O information? No? Okay, so Lawrence, there's no questions this time. So we're going to go to public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the study session item, including the goals? If we could go to the goals page before we have that discussion. Any members of the public here? Okay, Lawrence, we have a member of the public. If you could let him up. Thank you. Mr. Suter, you'll have two minutes to comment on the goals and, the goals and the budget item?
It's a very simple question. It's a clarifying question.
Okay.
On the projected expenses, I noticed the IT, but I didn't understand if, if the limits or the expanse of what the 23 and 24 expense items were for. So clarity on that.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public who wish to comment on the item? And do we receive any written comments for this item? We did not. Lawrence, if you could come up, back up and I'd like to ask if you would address the public question and just explain what's included in the IT budget, because it's different from the capital budget. This is the ongoing expenses, but you could capture that for him. That'd be great.
I want to report that in FY '24, there are two IT project. The first one is the, is the INT01 application and development. There's around $200,000. And the second project is the council audio and visual upgrade. Totally around like $200,000. And for the second year FY '25 is the continuation of the INT01, is the application and development. Again, the application and development include like a certain big project. The first one is to redesign the city website. And the second one is to expand the electronic document management system, the workflow process. And the last one is to migrate all the online application to the cloud-based server. So those are the two major project for the IT in FY '24 and FY '25.
And so just to capture that for the public and to be clear at home, so INT01, which we heard about earlier when we did the CIP, you basically say it's in two phases. One part is in 2024's fiscal year and one part is in '25 fiscal year.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. So are there other, so we're on discussion. Are there any other final questions for Lawrence before we go to discussion? Okay, thank you, Lawrence. So members, if there's no discussion on, any further discussion on the budget, the budget will be before you next month for adoption. We did want to go to goal setting. If we could move that one slide up. We'll explain how the goal setting has traditionally been done in the city, so that members can start thinking about what they want to. That would not be our goals.
I have to load the mayor. This is
That's okay, no worries.
Actually, I've been running it parallel. Okay.
Okay. So thanks so much, April, for all you do. So the, every couple of years when we do the budget, the council has the chance to set somewhere between seven and 10 goals, which, the goals are not by any means an exclusive list of the things that the city will work on. And this is what you'll, you'll see here are, are items that the city had as goals. And so it says fiscal year 2023 on it, but those, don't be fooled, that's not actually the current year's goals. That's actually the year ending. It's through the current year ending, correct? Yes, thank you. So these are items that the prior council's iteration adopted as its goals. And what they are, it can be, it can be, as you see here, specific projects. You'll see that there's a ballot measure. There was a desire for revenue. You'll see there was a program, electrification program was one of those items. So there are, there are different combination of things that, that the city by adopting the goals, by no means does it preclude us from working on other items. But it's sort of a statement that just goes in the budget document and is included in what we do with the staff. It creates sort of a, kind of like a, what are the priorities? It's not just the goals, but what are the top priorities for the city to work on? So the way we've facilitated this in the past is I'll call on, and the city manager actually emailed a list of options to you today. That's by no means an exclusive list of options. If you want to take a moment, pull up his email. He identified the items that we've previously discussed, some items that are currently underway that we might wish to consider. You can have separate items from that. There's nothing that requires you to recommend those. But if each council member would like to list up to three items that they'd like to see as goals for the city or things that are prioritized, I'll take turns just calling on each of you. And you can just, you can, you don't have to say three. You can say one or two or three. Once everybody has named kind of their, their three items, April is going to keep a list over there. She'll share her screen. And so we'll see what everyone's items are. And then what we'll do is everybody will make two votes to start. You'll pick the two items on the list that you would like to see be on the goal list. After everybody has put their first two votes in, if we have any item that has three votes, she'll move it over to a list that makes it, put it on the priority list, because a majority of people will have prioritized it at that point. As we go, we'll just keep adding one vote at a time. So council members will then be asked to cast your next vote for who you'd like, for which project or which list item you'd like to have as a goal. And as we, as we go along, once we get to five or six items, what we'll do is I'll, I'll actually call for you to add an item that's not on the list, because we're kind of looking to just get the primary things that people want to discuss out first. But if there's things people don't want to vote for, don't feel comfortable casting other votes for in the future, you, you don't have to cast a vote. You can say, I don't wish to vote at all for any of the remaining items. That's fine. You will have an opportunity to add one more item each, so that if there are kind of like a secondary level of things that you had in your mind but weren't in your top up to three, you have a chance to add one more item as we go along. And we, we cap the goal list generally at 10. That's kind of a round number that makes it easy for the council and the staff to work off of. It, it's been effective in the last six years. This council, the staff have found it very effective for moving on with city priorities. So with that, I'll seek volunteers. Is there a, a member of the council that would like to volunteer their three goals? The three things that they'd like to see on the list first? Vice Mayor Welch?
So the, complete the design of the pedestrian and bike improvements for 40th.
So 40th Street Design?
Yes.
That's one of them. All right.
4300 San Pablo and the Christie Sites and advance the Art Center project.
Okay, so I have 4300 San Pablo, the 40th Street Design, and I have the Christie Sites. Oh, I'm sorry, the Art Center. I'm sorry. My apologies. Okay, is there another council member who'd like to add their items up to three? Member Carr?
Sure, I can right now give you one.
Okay.
And that would be the tree canopy and the replacement of the trees that were down in the storms on the Marina especially.
Do you want to limit it to that or do you want it to be the urban tree planting program?
If it, if we can do it for, if we can do that, that would be fantastic. If we have to do only a limited amount, then I would want at least that.
So I'll just note that in our last round of goals, we accomplished, I believe, all the goals on the list. Is that correct, staff?
Electrify.
Or, we, we have one set of the fleet left to electrify, but everything else we accomplished, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, so we can put it there. And if, even if we only get to a part of it, we can still work toward it.
Yes, then I would very much want the, the, yes, the, the tree canopy.
Okay, so we'll, we'll put urban tree planting. And did you have others you wanted to add right now or?
I will defer those to, to, two of those I will defer, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yes.
Okay, member Mora, you said you had one?
Just a clarification on Vice Mayor Welch's question or her, the goal of the 40th Street Design. Is that similar? I'm wondering if we can group things together. The city manager suggested they begin construction on bicycle and pedestrian focused projects, including 40th Street, San Pablo Avenue, and Ashby Interchange. Are those distinct?
May I make a suggestion on that?
Yeah.
Okay, so because we just are about to get all the funding for 40th Street, if 40th Street is a priority, and I heard that was hers, I would say that it's not just design, it's design and construction, because the funding we'll get is designing construction. So if you want to make it design and construction, it's the whole project.
Yeah.
Okay. So if you want to add other projects and have a separate list for things, you could add those as other items. We don't list them all together. We try to separate them as, it's a little different than the CIP, which is kind of blocks of things. These are discrete items.
Understood, okay.
Did you have any that you wanted to propose?
So I'd like to include either, yeah, continuing to electrify the city's vehicle fleet. And I'm including the police vehicles, which are the highest mileage vehicles.
Okay. Electrify police fleet, just one for now, is that it?
And also the, the bike and pedestrian focused projects, San Pablo Corridor.
San Pablo Corridor, okay. Member Pryforce, did you have something you'd like to propose?
Yes, I also would like to prioritize the Art Center. And I believe that I'll be at the EDAC meeting to talk a little bit more. Because the, the feedback I got from members of the Public Art Committee is that they would like to redirect since the, since the Compound Gallery, that they don't want to conflict with the Compound Gallery. And so they would rather make it much more focused on exhibition and performing art. And they probably have shared that with you as well. And so that may adjust some of the designs that have happened in the past when it comes to the Art Center. So I would like to add a grant program that targets entryway modernization for our seniors. And, and, you know, since we talked about equity a lot today, a, I would like to add black and brown, small business and nonprofit support. And so that's less sort of grants and more so, for example, collecting data, finding a pipeline of communication, finding ways to keep them in, in Emeryville. And so I would say black and brown, black and brown, small and nonprofit business support. Actually, let's add Asian too. Black and Brown and Asian, small and nonprofit business support. They've also reached out to me as well. And, and of course, the entryway modernization grant program. And that's it.
Okay, member Carr, did you have others?
Yes, I do have others. The, we have had several discussions regarding federal grant funding. I have had, I have shared some emails with the city manager about the federal grant funding. We could get a dollar-for-dollar match for the tree. If we devote one million, we could get another one million from the feds. The deadline is June one for that program. I just want to install a, you know, process in place that we are eligible to get federal grants. There are eighty million grants for sustainable streetscapes. There is a one billion dollar grant. We could tap into a lot of these grants, and I want something that is devoted, a resource that's devoted to, to this if we don't have it already. My understanding is we have the grant writing ability, but we don't have the ability to report. So I think that by the time we are approved, we would be able to get the ability to report or outsource this, I think, very important piece of being able to get funding for some of these very, very good programs that all of us are coming up with.
So if I capture that and ask April to capture that as a federal grant-making plan, is that okay?
Sure.
That's what it would, it would require us to develop a plan and probably a staffing plan?
Sure.
Okay. So can we capture it as that on the, on the list? And did you have another item behind that? Because that's two for you.
You know what? The sustainable streetscapes and the, I think the Fortieth Street Corridor, she kind of goes hand in hand. So if you want to label it as one, I, I would like to go ahead and put my support behind that.
Okay, so Fortieth Street is plus sustainable, because David had also mentioned the bikeways. So let's just call it sustainable scapes plus Fortieth slash, maybe because they're the same bucket. Councilmember Moore, did you have other items that you wanted to add at this time, or no?
Could we add the new website?
That, we can, yep. So, all right. So mine, you all have taken mine. Website was one of mine. You know, the only thing I guess I would add is the quiet zones, but it's kind of like, it'll be finished, I, I feel like we should keep it on the list because we've gotten this far, but we won't, we'll have the project finished probably this year, but not the quiet zone. So I want to keep the quiet zone on the list that we can guarantee that we get the federal approval for that. That's the only item I'll add, because the Art Center and the website and the tree planting are the other ones. So, all right, so let's move to, we have a list that we can share. Oh, thank you so much, April. Okay, so on this, what I'll just do is we'll just go across the row here. I'll ask you to place a vote for your top two. You will get to vote again, right? We're just placing the top two as we kind of just move them into a priority order on the list. So councilmember Carr, like, could you tell us which two you'd like to see get your number one and two vote?
Urban tree planting and the, I would like the federal grant-making plan. Can I do three?
Just two for now.
Okay, yes.
Just two for now, yep.
That's, that's the two I want.
Okay, Vice Mayor Welch?
Fortieth Street Design and forty-three hundred San Pablo.
Okay, councilmember Mora?
Fortieth Street and the electric vehicles.
Thank you. Councilmember Pryforce, what are your two?
Art Center and the, the black and brown Asian small business nonprofit support.
Okay, my two votes, please. I'd like to vote for Fortieth Street. And I'm going to cast a vote for the urban tree planting program, please. Okay, so we have one item that got three votes, so if we could, final list, Fortieth Street gets a number one next to it in the left column there. Yep. There we go, thank you. Okay, so, members, you can cast two more votes now. We'll start at the other end. Member Pryforce, what would you like to cast two votes for?
That would be the Art Center and the Grant Program for Entryway Modernization.
Your votes stay, so we're adding on to, so you get to pick two more now.
Oh, two more.
Two more, yeah. So we'll, we'll keep picking, adding them until we slowly accumulate the, the, people have to add new ones, and we, so everyone has to add new ones.
Okay. So I would say the, the Grant Program, Entryway Modernization, and the New City Website.
Okay, councilmember Mora?
The Quiet Zones and the San Pablo Corridor.
There's San Pablo, there it is. It's in the middle. Yeah, I was looking for it too. Vice Mayor Welch?
Oh, why is it harder the second time around?
I know, right? Gets a little harder each time.
I will also say the Art Center and the black and brown and Asian nonprofit business support.
Okay, councilmember Carr?
The Fortieth Street and Sustainable.
It's already in the list. You don't have to vote for it.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, well.
No, I didn't vote for that one. I want, that was my third one.
You want to vote, you, it's already on the list, just so you.
Oh, I see, okay.
It's already moved it because it has a majority, so you don't have to vote for it at this point if you don't want to.
In that case, the Art Center, but does that include the library portion of it, or?
Just an Art Center right now, because we haven't had a study session on that.
Okay. Yes, the Art Center, and then I will like to, yeah, it's electrify the police fleet, fleet.
And I'd like to put a vote for Quiet Zones. And, um, did I already vote? I didn't vote for the website. The website, please. Okay, so which items got to three this time? If you could move the Art Center over, please.
So Mayor, will that get a number two on it then?
Yeah, just, yes, please. Number two, so that's the second one to make it over. And then we'll just, when we get to like seven, we'll, we'll look to see if there's any ones that are missing that we need to add. Okay, so you get to cast two more votes this time after this round. It's only one vote. So this time I'll start with councilmember Mora.
The new city website.
You can vote for one more.
Oh.
Said it was just one.
No, this last time is, this is the last time doing two. Next round, we'll only get to vote one time, yeah.
My apologies.
Yeah. Because otherwise you voted for them all pretty much.
Is it too late to add the Ashby interchange?
Next round, you'll get to add one more project. Everyone will get to add one more thing that's not on the list if they want, so that there's other things to vote for. But we're trying to just get, usually by the end of this round, there's like three or four. Next round.
Tree planting.
Tree planting. Okay, so that made it. Okay, next person will be Vice Mayor Welch this round.
Okay. The Quiet Zones and San Pablo Corridor.
Okay, so Quiet Zones made it to number five on the list. Councilmember Pryforce, it's your turn.
Quiet Zone and the Federal Grant Making Plan.
And Federal Grant Making is right there, right above it, yep. Okay, member Carr?
The San Pablo Corridor and I'm sorry, what is this grant program entryway modernization?
Member Pryforce?
That would be being able to provide a grant program, so, so property managers and HOAs can apply to receive funds that will modernize the entry doorways for their seniors.
Thank you. I would like to go for the Quiet Zones.
Okay, did, did San Pablo make it? Oh, it did. Okay, can I just see, is there anything above it that I didn't see? All right, I will vote. I'm going to vote for the Federal Grant Making Plan. I think that's a really important thing we figure out. And then I'm going to vote for, I'm going to vote for electrifying the police fleet. I don't know what it will take, but I'm sure Kalima and David will solve that for us. Eight. Okay, so we're at eight, so this, so we only, we, we stop at ten at the most. So we have two choices. We can stop now and have those eight. We can take one more recommendation from everyone and do one more round of voting. Everyone will get one more vote. So I'll do, if you have one more project you want to add that hasn't been added, we can, we can add it now if, if you'd like, if, you don't have to, if you have another proposal. Who has one that they'd like to propose that hasn't been added? You can raise your hand if you have one that. Okay, so member Pryforce, what's yours?
Moving a, the Emery Go-Round, stop closer to, to, to Emery High.
Do you, would you like, so we don't actually have any control over that. The TMA does that, so would you like to make a different proposal, or that's, we have no control over that?
Can you skip me and I'll think about it?
Okay, member Mora?
Construction on bike and pedestrian access at the Ashby Interchange. So Ashby Interchange.
So the Ashby Project, we'll call, it's the Ashby Project. It's a existing county project. Member Carr?
Was the active transportation plan not on there, or is some, are some of these projects part of the active transportation plan?
Yes, they're parts of it, yeah. So we're not, we don't put the whole plan as a thing on here. We pick specific things from specific plans or whatever. That's what we're doing with this.
So the Ashby one would fall under the active transportation?
It's, it's actually part of the county transportation plan, which is, because it's an interchange and Caltrans has it, but it has a bike bridge component to it, so it's in that plan technically, yeah.
Sure, I'll throw my support behind that. Do I get two or one?
Oh, we're not voting just yet. This is if you want to add something to the list.
Okay, yes.
Do you have something to add?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay, we'll wait for the vote. Did you have anything else to add? Member Pryforce, did you have anything else to add?
Cyber, cybersecurity upgrade.
Cybersecurity upgrade. Okay, can we add that? Okay, all right. So, members, you'll now get to make an additional vote. And we'll see if anything comes across the finish line, and we'll do nine, and then we'll ask if people want to add a tenth. So we'll start this time with Vice Mayor Welch.
It's the Ash, am I just voting for one?
Just vote for one, yep.
Ashby Project.
The Ashby Project gets one. Okay, next step on this round will be councilmember Carr.
Yeah, I have a question about one of, well, do I get to vote for one that's already there, or?
That already has a, you can vote for any item, but if it's already got a number in the left column, it means it's already made the list, so you can vote for something else.
Okay, I, it hasn't made the list. Forty-three hundred San Pablo hasn't made the list.
Okay, so forty-three hundred San Pablo. Member Pryforce?
Cybersecurity upgrade.
Okay, cybersecurity for member Pryforce, please. Member Mora?
The Ashby Project.
Okay, the Ashby Project. I'm going to get behind forty-three hundred San Pablo, please. And that, we'll put that at number nine on our list. Members, by a show of hands, how many would like to vote again to get a tenth project?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Actually, the cybersecurity upgrade, is it, is it not a part of the, it's not a part of the website, right? It's a completely different project?
I believe the city manager could probably elaborate on that.
I, I think you're probably talking about a separate sort of project. I mean, that's separate from the website. I will say, I mean, we have our IT director here. Folks have more specific questions about our, our cybersecurity status, but he and I talk regularly about that, and we are in the process of upgrading it now, actually.
You're already upgrading cybersecurity?
Yeah, we're, we're looking at, we're, we're comparing a couple of contractors who would help us support on our cybersecurity side, yeah.
Great. Do you already have the budget for it then? Why is it then on the list?
It's on the list because member Pryforce requested it as an item.
Oh, I see, okay.
Doesn't necessarily mean that they aren't already working on it, just like.
Many of them are being worked on.
That are being worked on already, yeah.
My apologies.
That's okay. So can we scroll down just so I can see who just voted? So member Pryforce voted for cybersecurity. And you, did you vote, member Carr?
Not yet, but you had asked if we wanted another item?
We already did that.
Okay.
It's only if. She has not voted?
I haven't.
Could, would you like to cast a vote?
Sure, I'll cast the vote for the New City Website.
Okay. That leaves me with you. Would you like to cast a vote? It was, but you voted.
Forty-three hundred San Pablo.
Okay, and could you scroll down? I'm going to cast a vote for the black, brown, and Asian small nonprofit business support. That's, that's number ten. Okay, members, so we could just see the ones there, just fit them in, yep. Okay, members, so this is the proposed list. As of right now, sustainable streetscapes and the Fortieth Street Design was number one on our list. Art Center was number two on the list. A New City Website is three on the list. The Urban Tree Planning Program was four. The completing the Quiet Zones is five. The San Pablo Avenue Corridor is six. Federal Grant Making Plan is seven. Electrifying the Police Fleet is eight. Forty-three hundred San Pablo, the intergenerational housing project is nine. And black, brown, Asian, small nonprofit business support. Do you, do you object to it being called something more condensed like BIPOC, Small Business Nonprofit Support?
Yeah, great idea. Thank you.
We can call it that, so it's, fits into the budget line item really easy on the print. So that's number ten. Are there, within those ten, is there anything about the list that members would like to discuss further before we entertain a motion to give staff direction to produce that as our revised goal list? Is there a question, member Carr?
Yes, I, I had a question about how does this thing jive with the capital, the technical portion of it?
So this is separate from the CIP? So the CIP is a document that captures the projects that the city will actively pursue funding on and dedicate staff time to building for our infrastructure maintenance. It's an infrastructure program, generally speaking. This is council goals, so the CIP is one plan. Like, we have our housing element, we have our active transportation plan, we have the general plan. We have a whole bunch of different things that we're doing. We have community services programs, you know, and so this, this list is designed to say, in the next two-year budget, the council has set as goals that these ten items be the things that we try our hardest to work on. And so when the staff look at the CIP or look at the active transportation plan, they have this as the guidance that, within these documents, these are the things we want them to spend the most time on.
Okay, one more question, if I may. So one of the, the questions or the debate that we had earlier today was about what is the public input in this? I'm thinking as members of the public, we are doing this, we are being charged with making those decisions on behalf of the public on how to prioritize our goals. Would, would I be correct in that, or do we need to get public feedback on this?
So this is council goals for a reason? So all the other ones have their own public process. This is really just for us. Like, what do we want to work on and work with staff on in the next two-year budget cycle? Again, it's not, this isn't like a limited list. It's not like something not on this list can't be worked on. It's just that part of goal setting is that if, it's to keep us on track, so that six months or twelve months from now, if there's a debate about what to do and a, what to have staff. if there's a debate about what to do and a, what to have staff spend their time on, right? We all can point back together and say, okay, our goals told us, you know, in, within the public safety space, we were going to electrify the police fleet, right? So when it comes to, here's this pot of resources, you could spend it doing this new idea that might come up in a year, or you could complete your goal. The idea is for us to stay, to keep us committed to getting our goals delivered, so when you looked at that list that was finished, we all focused on those seven to ten items and we got those things done.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Others with questions or clarifications? Does anybody have further comments on this list, is there anybody who wishes to make a change to the list that they think we should debate further? Okay, if not, is there anyone who'd like to make a motion to approve this as a list as proposed on the slide?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, there's a motion by councilmember Mora and a second by councilmember Carr to approve as the council goals for the next budget cycle. The items seen on the screen right now is one through ten receiving majority votes. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pry Force?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Batters?
Aye, thank you, that's approved, that's the end of our study session. It's eight forty, madam clerk, the meeting is adjourned and that is our evening.